Welcome, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, a nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Clemens.
Here.
Vice President Valentine.
Here.
Trustee McNally.
Here.
Trustee Cooper.
Here.
I don't believe we have any modifications for the agenda, so I think we can just have the resolution to approve it.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the next meeting of the Haldane Central, sorry, of the Haldane Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 p.m. here in the middle school, high school library. And as far as my comments, I mean, it's, I'm actually going to keep them really short because I expect Mr. Albano will have many more interesting things to say since it was the first day of school. I do just want to acknowledge that this is a really big year for us with the capital bond referendum that we're going to be discussing tonight and then our search for new superintendent and then just actually another really exciting school year. So here we go. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so first day of school. It was, I think, very, very successful. Kids got immediately into their routines. I think we're very comfortable. And I really believe that's attributable to all the careful planning that happened over the summer. Our administrative staff, the teachers, many teachers were in well before conference day, just setting up their rooms and that was all throughout August. As soon as we gave them the word that they could come in and set up classrooms. So careful planning certainly paid off. Transportation and arrival was very efficient, very smooth. I'm not going to say it was perfect. I've never been in a school district where transportation on day one is 100% perfect. There were a few missed stops. Parents right away called. They brought their children in. We took note, made adjustments. I would just encourage parents, if you're listening, anytime there's an issue with transportation, please call our transportation department. Both Adam and Melanie are very receptive. They are the best people. You certainly can always call me, but I think they're the best place to start. And I would think by Thursday, Friday, really this transportation model will be operating perfectly. The instructional support, instructional start of the year was fantastic. The teachers all really, you know, reviewed their expectations with their students, talked about the workload. At the high school, of course, that's a little more in-depth. At the elementary school, it's more about expectations for learning, for behavior. A new technology was introduced. We do have this efficient ClassLink that will make it very easy for students to log in, use their, all their devices, preserve instructional time, which is always the goal because that time is precious. The buildings and ground, many, many compliments. Parents who dropped off and stayed a little bit to catch up with neighbors and friends, many of them commented on how beautiful the school looks, the grounds, and we do appreciate that because the facilities committee certainly worked, the facilities department worked hard. The community, I think, is energized and very excited for the year ahead. I had the privilege of seeing our girls soccer team. They were the first ones to compete on the new athletic field.
Oh, that's exciting. Well, that's great.
And we had a great crowd. I watched two goals scored by Haldane, which was exciting. I don't think we won the game, but the spirit was there. It was a tough competitor, but again, the parents, I think it was just this very positive and wonderful feeling. Looking ahead, as Peggy said, I think we have some really good work in the year ahead and you'll hear more about that with the district's goals, so I won't go into detail. But I'm excited to embrace that work and work closely with the board. And I do want to thank the board for your time over the summer, supporting all of the things we needed to get this year off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will say anytime, even over the weekend, I actually have to be careful not to text Carl or email Carl on the weekend because I emailed him a couple of times and I was like, oh, he'll read this on Monday. Nope, it was a few hours later.
That's okay.
So I, oftentimes that's when I'm doing my board work is on the weekend and so anyway, I really appreciate it how responsive Carl has been. I mean, really, I think on Saturday night, it was 10 o'clock. Carl and I were just chatting. It was a little embarrassing, but yeah, much appreciated. Much, much appreciated. Okeydoke. So we're now at the first opportunity for communication from the public. The Haldane Board of Education desires to value the input from the parents. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on any special presentations or active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. We'd ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We discourage disparaging remarks of district personnel. And while we wouldn't engage in dialogue, please know that we're listening and we'd ask you to leave your contact information with our district clerk, Megan Shields, for follow-up from myself or Mr. Albano. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our information reports that we have in advance for our next business meeting in October. And we will move into consent agenda minute. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And, oh, actually, so one of the things I just want to note on here is an acceptance of donation from the Haldane Football Association. It could drive the condo for guardian caps. I actually mentioned Google what guardian caps are, but when I saw the letter recommending it from the football association, it sounds like they're really, they're an additional safety feature on top of what we already have. So that's really much appreciated to everybody, assuming that the board accepts it. Anything else?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
There. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for moving on into new business. So for the first recommended action, an agreement with the Fox Lane High School Hillside Program, may we have the recommended action sheet?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the attached agreement with the Fox Lane High School Hillside Program for the 2024-2025 school year and authorizes the board president to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so district goals. First of all, I really want to thank Mr. Albano for taking after our board retreat, taking our first pass at writing not only the goals that are shared with everybody here, but also beginning to work on a timeline that I actually haven't shared with anyone yet. One of the things we talked about at our retreat was really thinking about how we want to do our own board self-evaluation this year and we decided that this year, unlike the previous years, we're going to limit it really to these goals. And so once we settle on our goals for the year, we'll then come up with a plan for doing some self-evaluation. So again, thanks very much. Carl got me off to a really good start. These are the four, and I think we definitely want to talk about them. It's possible that I missed something from our conversation. So I think what we should think about is, I know this is the first time that you all are seeing them right now. So just so that those watching the meeting, what we have as our district goals as a draft for our consideration are a goal related to the capital bond referendum vote as well as subsequent planning, a goal related to our pre-kindergarten program planning, and that includes actually an application to the state department of education, clearly our long-term superintendent search. And then a fourth goal that we may want to talk about and decide like, is this appropriate for us to have as a goal or not, is to support there to be some district-wide planning for a STEAM program, right? And this is in light of the fact that the capital bond referendum includes refurbishing or reconfiguring a classroom in the main building for a STEAM, meaning science, technology, engineering, arts, math, yes, I should know this. And then also having this be one of the new classrooms that's in the high school addition that we're asking for. And we haven't talked a lot about it, but I think one of the things some of the district folks have recognized is that, you know, in anticipation of these spaces being available, in recognition that we've had programs like this, although we called them something else and that they were very, very popular and something that students were really clamoring for, that this becomes something that we really grow in terms of our programming. So, and I know Carl has talked to the administrative team a little bit about this. So two things I think I'm asking board between now and next meeting, and people can reach out to me individually to have update things, is are these the right four? And we should actually have this, the conversation about whether these are the right four or not tonight so we can decide whether we need to add one or take one off or do something else. And then between now and next time, think a little bit about, do we have the, do we have them worded the way that we want them to be? As another reminder, because this is an unusual year where we have an interim superintendent and we really have so much going on, instead of there being district goals and board goals separately, really what we decided to do is just to have one set of district goals that the district administrators and the board are working on in collaboration with each other and not separate.
Open for questions?
Open for questions.
I guess my first question about goal four is the STEAM program planning goals. Support the administrative team in planning a PK-12 STEAM program for the 26-27 school year. And just sort of, how was the, how was the 26-27?
I think that it might take that long or I...
Seems like a viciously early time in which, at least, at least facilities-wise, we would be in a position to start to implement such plans. So I'm curious about the 26-27, if we're talking about executing, you know, is it we're piloting initiatives, moving towards the need for? Or if this planning process will help us, you know, continue to plan how that space should be designed and as we're thinking about what we need to fit it out with, is that really programmatically, we're talking, let's have a planned place or support-making plan? So we know that once we have this space, we know what infrastructure is necessary in the classroom in order for it to be successful?
I think one of the things, the ways I understand it, but I'd be really interested to see what Mr. Albano says, is that I don't think this kind of programming has to necessarily be limited to just waiting until we have that space, right? So what, I went a part of the, an intimate part of the student's master planning process, but I think one of the things that was spoken about was opportunities for students to have more, opportunities for more hands-on learning kinds of experiences and that if that is truly a goal that the administrators have and the district have and the teachers have, then are there ways that we will begin to think about how to implement that, whether or not those spaces are built? So that, I think that's one way. That's how I'm understanding it. But I'll be honest, I think there's a lot for us to learn. And so in some ways, the goal is really there to sort of figure out, well, what, what could this look like in an ideal situation where these rooms are filled x years from now? And how would we get, what are ways that we can get to that? What are ways that we can begin to do this sooner rather than later? And then the 26-27 being that it takes a little while to build a program and, you know, it won't really be until, you know, partway through this year that we'll even know sort of what direction are we going in? Do we really think we're ultimately going to have those spaces? Certainly that's what we hope. But on the other hand, those spaces may not necessarily be on the horizon instead of what we... Does that seem like a representation of the conversations you've had with people?
Absolutely. You know, the admin team at our summer retreat spent some time in this area. And the thought process that, you know, we really left with is right now we're in the preliminary planning stages. So the capital project that will be presented to the community probably within two or three months certainly has the proposal of STEAM classrooms, one for the main building, another for the high school. What would happen next would be really to get into the details of working with the architects. You know, what do those rooms look like, the interiors? What type of equipment are we purchasing? What will the program look like? How will it be scheduled? Is there a dedicated teacher, for example? Are some of the, you know, questions that we were tossing around as an admin team? And when classes go into the STEAM lab, is there a co-teaching model? So you have someone with STEAM expertise and then a gen ed classroom going in? If you have furniture, you know, is it more geared towards middle school, which is what we're leaning towards? But could the younger children have access to it as well, maybe not as frequently? So those are the good discussions that are already starting. The admin team is going to be doing some visits to model programs in our area this fall. I think, you know, once the capital project goes out to a vote, if it is approved, I think then the planning will really kick in. And they do believe they'll need at least a full year. And then they'll need to come to the board through the budget process with proposals. Maybe it's for staffing, equipment, professional development. There are a lot of considerations. So they're excited about it, whether or not, you know, I guess arguably it could potentially fall under like a subcategory of the capital project goal, but it's more than just a capital project initiative. It's an instructional program. So that's where, you know, the idea of maybe separating them out seemed to make sense, but of course it's the board's call.
And how, digging a little deeper on it, so in what ways can the board help support? I mean, this feels like a district goal. This is one of those areas in which this is a district goal that we are supporting, but should we be expecting, you see, you're talking about the timeline being a year. Should we be expecting some sort of report at the end of this year or some sort of, you know, how can we be of, I guess, support in this particular?
Well, again, I think initially, if the referendum is approved by the public, we will have here at board meetings, I envision, and again, it's up to the board, but I would like to see the architects come periodically and give updates. So as these plans are really, you know, take, you know, shape and are designed and the details are, you know, thought through, I'd like to see the architects, you know, attending meetings, presenting to the board and for the public as well. You know, and then eventually it'll result in a submission to state ed. But there'll be a lot of details and I think you need to understand the rationale. You know, we're buying, purchasing CNC machines and 3D printers. I think, you know, the board ought to know, okay, if we're making this investment, how do we plan to utilize them and what does that program look like? So I think it's, the board is supporting this, I believe, more through the planning process, the budget process, and that's what we envision.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a little, I think I've talked about it with some of you all, maybe at our retreat. I don't know if I've talked about it at a board meeting, but like, it's interesting to think back. So before Dr. Fernandez, there was Dr. Bowers and, you know, she, you know, one of the areas in which she worked to be innovative that I think was really appreciated by the community was in creating as what ended up being a temporary teacher on special assignment position for a design collaborative innovate class. And one of our teachers who's very well respected, Mr. Duder, was in that position. And I think, your children may have been young enough to be, I think it was pretty universally like love. Like I think people found it, students and families found it to be this really exciting initiative. And I think actually, if we think back to our community forum, there were certainly lots of concerns raised, a community forum about, they had a special plan. There were certainly plenty of concerns raised about the scope of what we were talking about. But there was also some really very, some real excitement on the part of some, I think, younger parents in particular about the possibility of opening up these new program areas. So, yeah, so the way I understood it again is that this was a big enough programming goal or ambition that came out of the campus master planning process that it initiated these plans for these buildings. And so with those investments in mind and the goal, with the potential investments in mind and the specific goals about these types of learning opportunities, beginning to think about what that could look like, I think does, I've been on the fence about whether or not that made sense for a goal. But hearing Mr. Albano talk again about how important it is to be administrators because our goals this year are these shared goals instead of separate goals, it does kind of make, it may make sense.
And if, I would imagine, you know, to move to virgin wood, it's some of, some of our participation said conversation is continued on and on. Or then obviously we will have more to say about how we report with that. Either way, we're in pursuit of some sort of program, be it...
That's how I began, yeah.
So it's not specifically part of the capital referendum?
That's not, I mean, I don't think so, no. I mean, I think for us to have it as a goal, and again, I wasn't part of the campus master planning process. And so I've been assuming though that these, you know, these kinds of goals for this kind of programming was something that was discussed in those, those meetings or came out in some of the work that was, you know, done as part of that process, so.
Well, we were on that, but you said that twice to the people.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But we, but just, you know, we discussed the, you know, the possible need for said, but we didn't dig deep on programmatic.
Sure, sure, sure. No, no, I know. Yes. No, and I'm not just going to bring you on the spot. It's like, I don't want to totally repeat things. You know, they didn't happen because I wasn't there. But I'm assuming when I think about all the different community forums that have been, you go back to the strategic master, the strategic planning process in 2015, Dr. Fernandez, you know, strategic coherence planning process, like the idea of students being able to, you know, have these authentic learning experiences is something I think that's been consistently important to the community. So that's how I understand it, but wow.
And no, I think any type of new instruction, it's always, I mean, interesting to hear about and talk about, especially something of this. And I, you know, I think I remember a little bit of Mr. Duder having that and the kids, they love it. It's just, I was just asking because, you know, we have these, as we're talking to the public about the capital referendum, we have these buckets, right? And we, I feel like we're sort of pretty well versed in how we're talking about it and what's included. I just wanted to be sure of this. And then my other question is, and obviously we're not there yet, but, you know, some of these, you mentioned that the admin is going to be visiting some of the model programs at other schools. And we're not sure what shape the instruction would take, but, you know, would it be like an elective style? If we're talking about middle school, just in terms of, or would it be something that everybody participates?
Important question. That's what we were debating back and forth. I, I think, and this is not definite, but yeah, and I think it should be a really collaborative process to really, you know, you know, define this program and understand it. But I think we're leaning towards if it's going to be project-based learning, being able to go, let's say, for 10 weeks for a middle school, you know, particular class, whether that's every day or every other day. Because if you're working on a project, you know, we're on a six-day cycle. To go day one of the six-day cycle and then, you know, go six days later, we think would be a challenge. So that was one of just, you know, the practical scheduling things. We're seeing it maybe as a quarterly course, 10 weeks intense project-based learning. It probably would look different with the younger children. We are thinking there would be more done in the classroom, maybe occasionally go into the STEAM lab itself, maybe design something, then you can go and watch it, you know, be created from a 3D printer. So those are some of the ideas. And at the high school, it would be an elective course.
But so possibly do make it in middle school that's one of, it's like a rotation so that every student does.
Yes.
I like that. I like that because that's really a time when students are really beginning to develop their identities and even their plans for high school. So I think that's not good. So one of the things, so these, so is anything missing? Do you all think anything's really missing? Felt like, think about it, let me know.
This reflects our preliminary discussion.
Yeah. So I think one of the things that we would want... Is what? So when it comes to the capital, the four goals, when it comes to the first goal, capital bond referendum vote and subsequent planning, right? That's something we're all really well versed in. We understand, are going to have really good understanding at the end of this meeting, like the timeline and our roles and what we are doing around that. When it comes to pre-K program planning and application submission, we're not actively involved in the day-to-day process of that, but it's something we've been talking about for a while. So let's get there. Again, I think we're really very well versed. When it comes to the superintendent search, once November comes, at the beginning of December, we will become very well versed in what that's going to look like because it's our responsibility. But when it comes to this fourth goal, the district-wide STEAM program planning, that's a goal where even I think if we collectively decide to have that as one of our goals for the district for this year, we are really going to be kind of beholden to you and admin team to give us kind of a layout for how you, what you see that look like. And I know, you're with me personally, that that's, that's something that you're already thinking about. But like, I do think we'll want to think about the best way to have, you know, or port possibly at the beginning and end of, right? Not the beginning, but like the middle and end of the year, right? Like sort of, yeah, I think so. Yeah, I mean, if it were, even if it were in the middle of the year, regardless of what the bond referendum outfit is, it's going to reflect some initial conversations about goals for the program and what it should look like in the middle grades and that grade. And then at the end of the year, some more explicit plan of what would happen in '25, '26 so that we'd be ready to implement something like this. So feel free, send me your wordsmithing. Send me anything else that I... Again, thanks so much, Mr. Albano, for really... That's the discussion? And so now we'll move on to our next discussion, which is the use of excess fund balance. It's funny, it's four goals. It is so much more.
I know. It's funny. We want to break those down, simpler tasks. People see the enormity of just one of them.
But it's not. It's much, no, I'm good.
We're getting longer. You're fine. I just don't want to... I need to move. You're fine.
So you'll get a little over... People, yeah.
Okay, so fund balance as of June 30th, 2021. What I always start with is, I think it's going to be fast. There we go. Our fund equity as of June 30th, 2023. So we start with where we were. We ended 2023 with total fund equity of, see it from the angle of living, unfortunately, six million, just over $6 million with $3.4 million held in reserves, our $645,000 of appropriated fund balance that we always use as part of our budget, reconciling our, balancing our budget, and $882,000 that were held over for encumbrances for expenses from 2023 that were paid in 2024, leaving us with our 4% of $1.1 million of unappropriated fund balance. So that's where we started July 1st of 2023. Sorry, wrong way. Your fund equity changes based on, it's either positive or negative based on whether your revenues exceeded your expenditures or vice versa. We did have... We did have revenue over expenditures this year of just about $650,000. So as we start calculating our total fund equity as of June 30th, 2024, um, you take your fund equity, you back out your reserves. What's important to note here is our total reserves from the beginning of July 2020, 2023 to June 2024 did decrease by $750,000. As you'll remember, we pulled our reserves out to cover the expense of the turf fields. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. We have our same assigned appropriated fund balance. This year we have about $563,000 of expenses that we anticipate being, you know, we paid most of them already. It's usually just a timing difference at the end of the year. Um, so we have an available fund balance at June 30th of 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollars. We are allowed to hold 4% that equals $1.16 million. So we do have excess fund balance this year of $1.7 million. I want to talk about it in two stages. The first thing we'll talk about is what we definitely need to do this year. Um, I am recommending that we take $1.1 million of that excess and we fund some of our standard reserves and also give a little bit of additional funds to some reserves we haven't been able to fund in the past. Um, we will, I'm recommending $115,000 to our lunch fund reserve. As you know, we usually operate, but we always operate our cafeteria at as a deficit. So this will cover last year's deficit and also help us to cover part of the, the current year deficit. Um, I've been recommending $350,000 go to our insurance reserve. We have not funded anything in insurance in years. This is a reserve that we could use if we had some kind of, um, insurance claim that was denied. And we have no way to fund, um, a flood that isn't covered or something like that. And as you all know, with super storms and ice and different things, we have had some losses that luckily they've been covered by insurance. But this is just going to put aside some funds to help us make sure that we are covered in the case that something happens that is outside of our insurance or outside of our coverage limits. Um, I am thinking that we should put some more money into our, um, teacher's retirement system. You're allowed to fund up to covering an entire year's worth of costs for that. Uh, we're not quite there yet with this amount, but it would get us a lot closer. So that if we had a tight budget here, we know that we could cover some of those required mandatory expenses that we have no choice about with some reserve funds. Um, we have been consistently funding our liability reserve. Uh, I'm recommending $150,000 for this year, which will not only replace the funds that we used last year to settle a claim, but protect, you know, just again, protect the district for any possible future claims against the district for, um, you know, any lawsuits or things like that. Um, that will keep us with a nice, I think, pretty good, probably can keep it pretty consistent for a while amount in our liability. Um, and then the last one is EBLR. That stands for Employee Benefit accrued Liability Reserve. What that's used for is when someone retires and at the, we have a payout of either vacation time, sick time, you know, anything that's owed to an employee when they, um, leave the district at retirement. We are noticing that some of our retirees are have accrued a lot of sick time, a lot of vacation time, and it's, it's costing the districts, you know, some significant funds. This will help us with that. We can always, you know, take the funds out of our reserves instead of out of our budget.
Oh, that's good. And then you're not having to, so probably like, but, and then you're not having to necessarily budget for that as a contingency as much every year.
Correct. We budget for a certain amount. Um, but you aren't always positive that someone is going to leave, you know? I mean, we do have the retirement incentive where it does, we try to have people let us know that within two years, um, they're retiring, that's for our CSEA contract. But you know, there are, uh, you know, other people in the district to have buyout, um, in their contracts that don't have a two-year retirement notice. So it could take us by surprise. So I do think, again, you'll see, we haven't funded it since the 18, 19 school year. Um, and I, I don't have the numbers going back, but it's been a while since we put any numbers. And I, you know, without getting into too much detail, we did have a very large, we do expect a very large payout this year for an employee who's retiring. So I think that's a, a safe place for us to put some money. So that'll be about $1.1 million of the excess fund balance. But, and again, here's my recommendations just on a chart. That's what we'll be, um, voting on in a moment.
Can we stop and talk about this for a little bit?
Just, yeah, absolutely.
Before going to the next piece.
So I had a chance to hear just a little preview of this. I thought a lot, I thought all this made a lot of sense. I thought the insurance reserve, especially given as Catherine mentioned, unexpected storms, severe flooding in the district, those kinds of things, that it is within the realm of possibility that there could be a claim that would be denied. And I don't actually know how property insurance works for school districts. Uh, or that, that it was big enough that it could exceed. And I, I feel like it's a, it's a prudent thing to do. Um, as far as the, EBLR, how do you R? EBLR? I mean, it is a very, I was actually talking to some people about it the other day. From my own experience, I have very nice benefit in my previous job where I could accrue a lot of vacation days, right? And when I left my job, my organization that I worked for was responsible for paying me what was ended up being a fair amount of money, right? And it's a great thing that we're able to offer our teachers and staff. But for any organization, it is a kind of financial risk, right? Because you never know exactly when people are going to leave. And, um, these are vacation and sick days that people have worked for. They're part of their compensation. It's things that they're really due to earn. But it, it can total a lot of money. And I know it's something that organizations across are looking, really looking into. How do we help protect our organization from these kinds of financial? I don't want to say bumps. I think bumps is the right way, like financial bumps. So that was, that was some of my thinking about these.
I think it's always good to point out that I guess last year, the year before last was the last year that we were, we received any sort of federal subsidy due to COVID for students. First year we paid back in.
Right. We do, we do receive, obviously, our claims for our pre and reduced and things like that. Um, and that is why you saw that we had a couple smaller funding of the cafeteria, but.
And then also, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I was gonna say also, I also think it's good to know, just to put it out there, that if we chose not to, uh, redirect any of these funds, what would we do with the excess fund now? What would our obligation?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Okay, yeah.
We're going to talk about now.
I'm blowing the interlocker.
When we run out of funds to fund.
Well, I mean, there was something we talked, something we talk about every year because it is ever, something that happens every year is that, and it'll come up when the audit will come, what comes out is that, you know, we do operate our lunch, our meal service as a deficit. And that's, it's not unique to how they, it's unique to everybody. Maggie and I had the opportunity to have a really nice conversation with Nancy Norton in the spring. And Maggie just asked her about the kitchen and how things were going on. And it was really clear from that conversation how, just how committed Nancy and her team were to finding the best, healthiest options for students, really finding that students really like to eat, that are good for them. Is that a fair representation of, I mean, she's able to like predict semi, predict sales.
It's amazing. You know, the weather and the factors or what day it is for the seniors. I mean, she, there's a lot of thought that goes into that program.
I mean, she really, she, her, her knowledge was so extensive. It was really impressive. But just also how thoughtful she was and really how to make good meals that kids will eat. So it's certainly, you know.
Well, and another thing to remember about the cafeteria is, um, each year I have to go through this tool. It's called the paid lunch equity tool, which is how you calculate what you charge for your school lunches. And we are limited to a 10 cent per meal cap every year. And as all of us who are feeding our own families know, it's not, that 10 cents per meal is really not covering what the increased cost for those, those meals are. And we are actually bound by that, um, through the child nutrition program out of SCD. This is the maximum we can increase lunch by is 10 cents, um, a year. So.
I just have a question about the insurance reserve. It seems like a very smart decision. I'm just curious about what our normal insurance covers. Like what are some anticipated or, um, I guess what things are you thinking of that might be outside the realm of our normal insurance? I'm assuming the school has flood insurance and, you know.
It does. Um, insurance limits are changing because insurance has become very, very expensive. Um, so they are on a pretty consistent basis, slowly backing back on some of the coverages that we do have. Um, I don't remember if it was in the 2023 or 2022, but we did have a pipe freeze in the high school. And it caused a flood into the high school. We had to do pretty significant repairs. Uh, because it was a, a frozen pipe that leaked, it was covered. Had a pipe just, you know, age broken and, and flooded the same thing. It wouldn't have been covered by our insurance, you know? So there are some things like that. Um, with some of the, uh, flooding that happened in Goldsprint earlier this year, where some people were able to get some FEMA help, nothing that happened to the school was able to get that kind of help. And it also wasn't covered by our insurance. I mean, and none, none of it was catastrophic in this kind of numbers. But the, for instance, all of the mulch that was on our playground, flooded, you know, washed away and we had to replace all that. And, you know, that's, that's an expense that we were able to cover with our budget. But if it was something more significant than that, you know, heaven forbid, you don't even want, I mean, well, that would be more liability. But if we ever had a horrible accident happen, um, with one of our buses or things like that, there are things that would be covered. And, uh, it's probably since we have the funds this year, prudent to put away for, you know, plan, you know, hope for the best plan, plan for the worst stream situations.
Right, exactly.
And again, it's been years since we put any funds there. So that's what I think we should do with the majority of our funds.
And will you go back and tell us what the total of that was again?
It's 1.1 million dollars.
It's 1.1.
1.15. So, but then we come to, we are going to be over our 4% this year. Um, which we talk about occasionally at the audit. It's something we, you know, school districts are one of the only government entities that are held to only having 4% in reserves. Um, it's hard sometimes to get to that number. We are going to be over the 4% allowable. I don't know the final number yet. My estimate is that we're about $600,000 still over where we are supposed to be according to the Office of the State Controller. This is primarily due to interest income from this year. We had extremely favorable interest rates. Um, about this time last year, I stood before you and asked us to open a new investment account with New York Class. We did, and it was, it was a good choice, you know? Um, it's, but we made, and we made it a way more interest income than we anticipated this year. Um, in most worlds, that's, that's a really great thing. And I'm, I'm actually happy for the school district for that. The other thing that is causing this, um, undesignated fund balances, again, I remind, I said, you know, we pulled out $750,000 from the repair reserve. Normally when we use a, a reserve, we refund it at the end of the year so that we can, you know, build the, the funds back up. There are some fund balance regulations that are kind of tricky. And because of those, we cannot this year refund, you know, ref, refund our repair reserve. We also can't put any money in our capital reserve. Um, about eight years ago, as we were planning for the 2019 capital referendum, we had to go out for voter approval to have a capital reserve fund. You have to renew your capital reserve voter authorization every 10 years. So it was about eight years ago, they went out to renew it and they set a threshold of a million dollars. A million dollars is probably a little bit too low for a school district of our size. Um, but since we already have a million in there, I'm unable to put any additional funds into the capital reserve. So we are going to have an audit finding of being over the 4%. What happens at that point is they're going to ask us for our corrective action plan. What a corrective action plan is, is it's simply saying, you know, why did it happen? And what are we going to do about it? And why it happened, I have an explanation. And what we're going to do about it, our plan is to use this excess fund, excess fund balance so that this time next year, I'm able to replenish the capital reserve because we're going to be using a million dollars with our bond referendum with the assumption that, 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 uh, vote will pass. Um, I also am going to recommend to you as we go through budget season, that we renew our capital reserve authorization to increase that from a million dollars. I think we have a lot of capital work that we're planning on doing. Um, some is included in the referendum and some wouldn't make it in there. And I think that, you know, we, we would be able to, again, put some money aside for some, um, infrastructure needs that the school district has. Um, the other good thing about right now having some undesigned fund balance is it gives us the ability to use funds for emergency expenses. Um, we lose a boiler this winter. You know, we don't have that in our budget. Again, that wouldn't be covered by an insurance policy or anything like that. So it would just allow us to use some of the emergency expenses. So, you know, I mean, I think it's not ideal. It's not what I would have wanted to stand up here and tell you because obviously I would love an audit that doesn't have any findings on it. But, um, I think it would be worse to be standing up here and saying, we didn't have enough money. And now we're talking about cuts to programs or cuts to things. So, um, it's kind of where we ended up. I'll know a lot more. We will present the audit report in mid-October and we'll know exactly where that is. But, uh, again, I'm confident that it's a one-year, um, unexpected complication. And, um, we're gonna, what is that? Make lemonade?
Well, I did one little question about what you said about making recommendation for the recommended renewal. That would mean going back to the vote, the rest, we're, we're reaching that to your obligation anyway, but that's.
And I think the thing that we'd have to be very, you know, make sure that we do is, I think we should go out, ask the voters to allow us to increase it.
Yeah.
Um, reminding them that it's, it's completely tax neutral. The, the money is already here. It's just allowing us to put it into a savings account. You know, but it does require voter approval for us to be able to do that.
So if the referendum doesn't pass, and we have the extra money, and so we don't use that one million that we're planning to use for the capital referendum, does that have any bearing on where?
If it didn't pass and we still wanted to do some of those repairs, we'd be able to use the million dollar, you know, we'd have to get voter approval to use our savings. It would, so we would have to wait until May. We'd have to put that up for the voters. Because you, the use of capital reserve has to be, um, voter approved. But yes, it would allow us to do things if, in the worst case, that we didn't.
Yeah, and I hadn't, I, you know, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that until we were starting to talk about that. But in the worst, you know, in a not great scenario that the capital bond referendum doesn't pass, there is so much in there that is about just getting our buildings where they need to be, right? I mean, there is so much there. There's so much there from the building condition survey about, I mean, electrical stuff, I mean, just all kinds of infrastructure, the kinds of things that we're all having to take care of in our homes all the time. And, you know, a big piece of the, of, of, of that work is we have a, a district that is, in a lot of places, does not meet ADA requirements, right? It is not an excessive, like, there are so many things that we really need, that the idea that we would have these funds and we, while we're still working to figure out what the right next step is, to make sure we have those available, I think is really, there is no shortage of need in this district for those kinds of funds. So, but that's a really, that's, that's, that's right. Yeah.
So for, for some, what is a note in the audit is for others, an opportunity.
Well, and I think it's quite meaningful. You know, I know from chatting with Catherine that this was a surprise and, and not ideal and not something she said that she's, you know, excited about in, by any stretch of the imagination. But I think it's also really important to note that year after year after year after year, our audit reports come back with no, with no, with no finding. I mean, everything, and that just speaks to the really fantastic work of, uh, you know, our business administrator. Catherine and before, and Dino, and just what a fantastic job they both.
Now, and you know, a material finding would be, that would be what would be bad in an audit. You know, like material discrepancies, things like that. That's when it would be, you know, really horrible thing. And it's, you won't, you won't have that. And it's, you won't, you won't have that. I can assure you of that. But I'm pretty comfortable with that. We have a plan moving forward. And uh I think in the long run, it's good that this happened because it has allowed us to understand that we do need to put some more information out before the voters get a little bit more um in our capital reserve so that we can, you know, take care of a very aging infrastructure here.
Great. Thank you, Catherine.
No, not yet. I'm just gonna shut off the screen. So it sounds like in that conversation that we are all comfortable with the plan that Catherine and Paul support for us. Um, so our next step then is for us to uprise the dues that we listed. So may we have the recommended action plan?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the use of excess fund balance for the fiscal year ended June thirty twenty twenty-four in the following manner. Transfer to school lunch fund, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer to insurance reserve, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transfer to TRS retirement reserve, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transfer to EVALR, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transfer to liability reserve, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do you have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so um we're to the point where um we're ready to there's been a lot of talk about the capital bond referendum. Um, and now we're to the point where I think we're ready to set a a date. Um, and um as, you know, I've uh Maggie and I discussed with Joe Albano and his discussions with CS Arch, um, some, you know, final planning and putting things together, a date that we're thinking makes sense is November nineteenth. So that gives us time to um communicate again with the public, but in a more focused way to make ourselves available uh to answer as many questions as people have. Um, and then also gives, you know, the architects the time to to put um everything together.
I I think that's an accurate summary of of what we've discussed with the architects. Uh, there there are, there's a a bit more in in the early planning phases that they would like to do. Um, they would appreciate having, you know, till mid-November. Uh, that's that, that's what they uh, you know, asked us for. But additionally, on on the district's end and working with Megan and the admin team, as far as communication to the public and and making sure that, for example, the video that that we are planning, um, we're going to release an informational video about the project. But we would also like to invite people in because video is is is, I think, a very useful tool. But I think, you know, being in here, walking the buildings, you know, really being able to see, you know, some of our voters maybe haven't been in the school building in twenty or thirty years. So to understand, point out the conditions and things that we're we're trying to accomplish, I think would be very helpful. So if the goal is to make sure every community member is really well informed, having till mid-November, I I think makes sense. So so that that would be our recommendation to the board, but of course, we respect whatever the board's decision is as far as the the timing of the vote.
The nineteenth is, I don't have the calendar in front of me, this is the week before the Thanksgiving break, correct? The next Tuesday.
Yeah, Thanksgiving is like the very.
Very, very late this year. Well, I mean, in as far as our ability to communicate effectively, um certainly many other things that people have to weigh in on as far as their uh their responsibilities as as citizens are concerned will have been resolved by that time. So I think it's an opportunity for us to, you know, be heard. Um, there'd be lots of things on people's minds, so I think that the nineteenth makes sense as far as that's concerned. Complaining it with the November sixth date or doing it any sooner, I think runs the risk of it being, you know, lost in the noise of other major situations that makes sense to me. And remind me, what is, what is the ti- what is our our obligation? We post like a sixty-day, two-month obligation between when we?
So if we decide tonight that we're comfortable with that date, at our next meeting, we'll have a resolution that really calls for the vote. And then we go through the process of legal notices, those things really similar to what we do for the budget vote.
I'll add one other thought. Um, about a year ago, uh, there was no option of a third-party review for your architectural plans, and New York State was backed up. The, so after your architect submitted plans for a project, it was not uncommon to wait eight or nine months for approval, which is a challenge. They reinstated what is called a third-party review option. So there's state-approved architects that can expedite your your approval process and bring that eight or nine months down to two or three months. So also knowing, that was in place years ago, they, the state stopped it, but now it's reinstated. So also with that, I, that was something else CS Arch pointed to because I was a little concerned about this wait time. But they said we have the the third-party review option back. So they're pretty confident that we could certainly move this along quickly, even with the November vote.
Because we have had some internal discussions, I think, at one point of thinking, oh, it maybe needed to be earlier in the in the year to for this exact purpose, right? Because we knew it would take the state state at its long time to review them to smooth if the third party. Architectural review. It's good news, Brad. It does give more time for us to.
Yeah, the the timing, I don't want us, we'll we'll have many, many more opportunities to talk about this. But if if it's approved in November and you go for a third-party review, you're probably looking at maybe, you know, a bidding process as early as this spring. So you could get out there and and potentially, uh, you know, so so um I think again, you know, more reason we are comfortable with the November date, as long as the board is comfortable with that, it is the time to really be thorough.
As far as the timeline for informing the public, are we sticking with a similar timeline? As far as being able to share some information with them during curriculum nights, we had talked about maybe having posters, presentations at that point, or this information, this video that you're producing.
Uh, well, I think curriculum nights start maybe next week. So we, the video will not be complete. They've been on campus twice already doing interviews, and they'll be back on campus this Thursday as an opportunity to really get the campus in motion so that they can be shooting while kids are here and classes are in session and really kind of capture some of the challenges that we base on a daily basis. Um, but yes, absolutely. I believe the administrators and um Mr. Albano are planning to talk about it at curriculum nights. We won't have all, we won't have like renderings in place, but we certainly um can have some information to give out and they can speak to the parents while they're here. And then we'll be able to unroll a lot more leading up to it. I think we have full intention of starting to communicate it in the next two months. But like you said, knowing that we might not get people to really, really pay attention until those couple of weeks leading up to it, but.
Look, can you remind me, I know we talked about it, I won't be in town next week. I could come to, I remember there's one next week, the following week, then the following, in terms of.
Yeah.
Nights. Can you coordinate with the board to see if one of us who's been a parent at that night can come just to be available?
Sure.
To to talk to people. Um, I can, like I said, I can't come next week, but I could come, I could do something.
Yes, I'll send something out to everybody and we'll see. We'll try to get people to do nights when you're not being a parent.
Yes, yeah.
For vacation.
I thought that was every.
Yes.
Not pretending your child's curriculum night. So thanks for thinking about that so thoughtfully. I mean, I mean, I really, here again, you know, when we were looking for an interim superintendent, we really, we knew we needed someone that had experience with this process. And it has, you know, Mr. Albano has really paid off because there's so many things, and he's gone through the process early, you know, recently and and further back in his career, there's so many things that he's aware of, and and it's really very helpful. So we're getting to this day with a really, the, you know, the thinking of, you know, certainly Dr. Bellante when he was here and Megan and Mr. Albano and the entire administrative team. And and I really appreciate the real thoughtfulness that's gone into really thinking about how to set us up for um uh being able to communicate effectively with the community.
That's just one thing. I'm sorry, Carl, you mentioned this gives time for school visits by community members. Is that sort of everybody? Or will there sort of, how will that be? Right, I feel like you don't have kids at times. I think that's old work. And I would imagine, what if you have like a huge influx of people? I always ask that question. Uh, that one, see, uh, something that's available to everybody?
Yeah, yeah, I I would absolutely encourage everyone, even, you know, people that don't have students here or children here. Um, typically what we do is we have the architects um on-site. Uh, we try to get people to kind of sign up in advance, but of course, we don't turn anyone away. And we would set up at least, you know, several different nights. And and it, I would expect maybe only thirty or forty people, you know, to come out. Um, you know, others that are very familiar with the schools mainly. You probably will get more um people that that are not parents currently that are curious. And I think it's important, you know, tho- those opportunities are really important. I I I think if someone, I think a goal is if someone decides not to support the project for whatever reason. Maybe it's strictly financial. I want to make sure that person is well-informed. So if they're, if they are going to vote no or not vote, I I think the goal that we should have is just to make sure everyone really understands what what we're trying to accomplish. And again, if you, you know, with that extra time, having those evenings, maybe, and and some maybe dators as well.
I was thinking that, you know, because like there's so many seniors are in our community that go to lunch at the senior center. Like, the idea of having something would have to be during the school day, but I think we could accommodate that, you know, like right before or after that time, you know, and make sure um that those folks know, you know, um, that's the one group that I could really, you know, could really think of. Um, and then, you know.
I think we have a lot of younger families who probably haven't had an occasion to be in the high school. Or to be in the Mabel Merritt just because they haven't come to that time yet.
Yeah, doesn't make sense. Um, yeah, or maybe do them like, I don't know, like, right after. So I think the idea of doing them at a, at staggered times would be good if at all possible. Maybe even a Saturday morning, you know, like, you know, um, for people who who were, you know, um, everything that we can do to share that information because it's not just giving people the tour, but it's also an opportunity to sit down and talk.
Yeah.
To people. And I know the board is so committed to supporting these efforts, so I'm sure, yeah. Um, all right, so, well, next time we'll vote.
Yep.
And everybody feels comfortable. For that day.
Okay, great. Yep.
Um, so the next piece is you.
Yep.
You're using the screen, right?
Yep. We, um. One of the things that we started looking into after, oh, I'm not.
Presentation, no?
Oh, you say.
Are you?
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, just as a, to backtrack a little bit, if you remember our vote in May, we were not able to use Putnam County's voting machine. So historically, for all of our school budget votes, the county provides us with voting machines at no cost. And uh they provide us with a list of inspectors who we then hire, we do pay to work at the vote. So in May, and really for the, for twenty twenty-four as a whole, Putnam County did not provide voting machines. So for the May vote, we rented machines from an independent company, and that cost us twelve thousand dollars of the district to rent those machines. Uh, and then we had our, we hired our own staff to help work at the vote, or it shouldn't say our own staff, we hired our own. Uh, we did have some issues with the machines that we rented. We, some of our voters were extremely patient. One of those machines ended up jamming quite a bit during, throughout the day. We got through the vote fine. They had the other dedicated machine. But after that, we started considering different options, and we learned that Putnam Valley for the May vote had used an alternate solution. They used, uh, they were they worked with a company called Remark. And uh it's a licensed software that works off of scanners. So the district would purchase scanners, and we would have a software license. The ballots would be printed in-house. People would still use a paper ballot. And then this software would help us tally the results at the end of the evening. So I want to just jump ahead and sort of talk through how the voter experience would differ from what people are used to voting and how it would work with Remark, and then sort of discuss how the board feels about some of the pros and cons of possibly changing our process. So historically, our voters come in and they check in at our tablets. If you remember from years ago, we started using bowls. So they check in with the tablet, they receive their paper ballot, they vote on the ballot, and then they scan it into the voting machine, and they get dropped it to a box underneath the scanner. With Remark, they would still check in with the tablet, they would still fill out a paper ballot, but instead of scanning the ballot right then, the voter would insert it into a secure ballot box. What would happen differently at the close of the polls is that I would then take all those ballots and scan them all at once. And the benefit of doing that is that it allows us to scan every single ballot that we get. So right now, at the close of the polls, our people who work the machines pull the reports of how many people or the results that were voted on the actual machines. We then hand-count the absentees, and we hand-count the early voters, and then we manually tally all of that. The Remark system will allow us to scan every single ballot we receive. So we'll also be able to scan our absentees. We'll also be able to scan our early voter ballots. They're just barcoded. So we'll still get the results broken out, and we'll still be able to reconcile the number of ballots that we receive with the number of voters who checked in at our iPads. So we will know for sure that we have the same number of votes as we do voters who showed up that day. So in terms of voter experience, that's really the primary difference. You as the voter are not sticking your piece of paper into the scanner. You're sticking it into a secure ballot box, but at the end of the night, we be scanned all at once. Financially, that is a fairly significant savings for the district. So now again, for this vote, this referendum vote, if we proceed in November, we will, we would have to rent voting machines again. So we would be looking at spending another twelve thousand dollars to rent the voting machines. Currently, we have to send, uh, we have to use an external printer to have those ballots produced. That's six hundred and fifty dollars. And then we hire the counties and election inspectors to work that day. If we choose to transition to Remark, we have a one-time licensing fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. We estimate that it would be about seven hundred dollars one-time fee to purchase two scanners, and we would purchase two just so we have that security that night. Uh, and then we pay a five hundred dollar annual maintenance fee. So the significance would be significant for us just for this one vote. Going forward, then, once we have these scanners, they would be in our possession. They would be dedicated to the vote. It would be used for other purposes. We would be able to use them on an annual basis. We would be printing our ballots in-house on regular. So it's a consideration. It's an option. Um, interestingly, when I spoke to, I spoke to Putnam County Board of Elections recently, um, and they said, oh my gosh, you guys have a referendum, you know, we're not going to be able to give you machines. And I said, we know you're not going to be able to give us machines. And they said, you should really talk to Putnam Valley because they use this new system. We had already been in conversations with them. We already had actually done a demo with Remark to learn more about it. So, um, I think it's interesting that Putnam County Board of Elections is even sort of steering people in this direction is something to consider.
Putnam Valley happy with it? Have they had any issues?
They were really happy with it. So I spoke with that clerk, they were very happy with it. They, um, they did do, they had an effort to educate the public about how their voter experience would feel a little bit different when they come in. Um, they said that, um, they did have some members of the public who who requested to be present for that scanning at the end of the night, which certainly fine. And that all went very well for them. And, uh, they said that at the close of the polls, it took them about twenty minutes to scan everything and be tallied. And we've certainly had times that it's taken us way longer than that to get through our absentees and reconcile that. And it's, it's always been a little bit more of a manual process.
So that's the response to any community member who might have a hard time transitioning from not getting to see it scanned themselves.
Welcome to observe the process.
And watch the process.
Absolutely, yeah.
So and who would we, so my memory for this last budget vote is it was you were certainly there.
In terms of people that we would need.
How many people we would need.
Yep, so we would still want, we have our two, uh, tablet stations where people check in. So we'd still have a person manning each of those tables. Um, we certainly could have someone manning the secure ballot box, although there really isn't much to it, you're really just sort of there with the box. So a voter would check in, they would still go to the partition, fill out their ballot, and then insert their ballot in a box. And at the close of the night, between myself, Catherine, Catherine's typically there at the close too, between myself, Catherine, and the two people who worked the tablets, we would just consolidate all those ballots.
So both you and Catherine, because I'm trying, I'm thinking of a couple of things. I'm thinking about having just an extra person, like another person who is there kind of not. I mean, they're paid by the district, so it's not like they're an election observer or anything. We're just like one, one more person who's there to sort of be there as a support person. And then just also making sure that we have adequate trained people on using the system if.
Right, well, so the Remark, yes.
Thinking about the day.
Well, the Remark people would certainly be accessible to us from a customer, customer support standpoint. I think what I would also do is I would probably ask Leah or, um, or someone from, um, Edgitech, thank you, sorry, like someone from Edgitech to be present, especially in our first go around of using it. And then I have any, I have someone there to troubleshoot if there were any technology things that we needed troubleshooting.
And when you spoke to Putnam Valley, was there, their process whereby they decided to do this similar? Was it they weren't getting access to voting machines and they were having trouble?
Yeah, they just decided in May that they didn't want to spend that kind of money to rent machines. And they started looking into other options. They did also share with me, um, their district uses the same legal counsel that our district uses. They did run this process by their legal counsel and they had no concerns with it either.
Yeah, I think the one thing in my comment was, and I trust you to figure out what kind of staff you need, but I think from the perspective of a board member, I wouldn't want us to skimp this being the first time we're doing it. I wouldn't want us to skimp on having like, well, you only really need two people, so we only hired two people. I want to make sure that we, that there's, there's plenty of people. It's a ruined day anyway, at least, you know, some people can take breaks and stuff like that, but there's definitely staff and that there, you know, there, there are people, typically our election workers are people from the community. And it's one way to bring people from the community into the whole day and so, just a thought.
Yeah, I don't think it's in, I don't think we're looking at it as a need to skimp on that number of people that work. But when we use county machines, we are required to have two people per machine. Um, which in the course of a voting day is, you know, it's, it's a little, that's, that's overkill for us. That's a lot of support.
This would seem to me to be a, a, an option where schools of our, districts of our size seems to be a right-sized option.
Yeah, I mean, I, it does seem like, and it, it really is very scar- scalable because you could certainly have multiple scanners going at the end of the night if you chose to.
I think, I just to sort of state what my only apprehension about it is, is that whenever you change a process that has become familiar like this, questions are asked. And since we're going into a capital referendum that is likely to be somewhat, uh, you know, controversial or scrutiny makes me a little apprehensive about changing that process at that moment.
I think that's fair, that's why I wanted to talk about it now.
Niggling concern in my mind about it is the, you know, the potential accusation that there's some, some kind of underhanded process that they're doing something.
Because I, I, I do think really that's, that's our consideration now. If we think this is a good direction for the district to go, then yes, we need to make the decision if we want to make that change for the referendum vote or would we feel more comfortable making the change for the May vote. Or do we not want to change what we're doing and?
Seems to be that.
And and just to be, to be very clear, is we don't want to change what we're doing. We would rent the machines again for this referendum vote with the hope that in the twenty twenty five school budget vote, the county would supply machines again.
But your experience, you, you, I mean, from the, so I totally hear what Sean's saying and I saw Michelle nod her head, yes, when I heard this, I had the same concern. You don't want to give people any.
A necessary concern, doubt, any trust around voting mechanisms.
And so, but from your perspective, like this is, from the perspective of a district clerk, the person who runs this process, you think the Remark would be a good direction for the district to move into?
I do, and I, yes, I do, and I, even more so, having gone through the vote in May, because what we, what we rented really was a scanner on top of a box. And we had two of those side by side, the company sent someone to set them up. One of those scanners really jammed all day long, and then we focused on using the other scanner. But I do understand that it, it does alter the voter experience that day. And that's something we just have to think through.
And the, but the county is also sort of recommending.
Yes.
Where we go.
And it's, yes. Yeah, I think, you know, supplying the voting machines for schools is a workload for the county. And for the, for twenty twenty four, they think they decided to just, you know, eliminate that. There were other, other counties above us and below us that, that those counties did still supply their voting machines in May. Putnam County did not, so.
So board needs to make a decision about, because we'll approve the expenses one way or the other. When do you need a decision from us? And I don't know if people feel like they're ready in May.
Yeah, I mean, I think if people want to sit with it, that's okay. I would hope that certainly by our next meeting, we could make a decision, if only because if we're not ready to move forward, I need to rent those machines.
Yeah.
So if we decide that this isn't the right time, then I just, I do need to secure the voting machines instead.
It's unfortunate to be concerned about the fact that there is distrust, but there is, and and sometimes there's a lack of trust and that changes.
Hard.
But change, change is hard, right?
And.
Well, and then, you know, we all have, even if you, if you live in the, we live in Nelsonville, and the voting experience at Nelsonville is very particular.
Yes.
And it does not feel as, as secure as the, as the options that you're presenting here. So, and we manage to have trust when we go to that.
I have so much trust in the Nelsonville.
So it certainly isn't any apprehension that I have about it, and I certainly trust Putnam County and I trust you and all, I wish I'd come forward with it.
It, it's, it's a, what is actually happening with your ballot is virtually identical.
Yeah.
It is going through a scanner. It's, it is just the fact that it isn't going through the scanner before your eyes. They are all going through the scanner together at the end of the night.
This is such a dumb, yeah, anyway, did you, do you want another week to, do you want another couple of weeks to think about it?
I think let's discuss and, you know, maybe more, but a week, yes.
Okay, so we'll put in there anyway.
Yeah, yeah. And I wanted to say, absolutely, it makes sense, because wondering, you know, kind of community temperature on it.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, thank you for making it through.
Yes.
Thanks, Megan, that was really a good presentation.
Okay, another discussion.
What'd you say?
It's another discussion.
You said it with a kind of apprehension.
I want to discuss. But I think we make this pretty short.
Sense, yeah.
Can we go?
Sure.
Um, so a long time ago, when my child was in elementary school and middle school, and I feel almost through high school, every year the PTA sent out a directory, it was in paper, and it had the name, the address, the parent's name, the phone number, and eventually the email of every single child in the district. And I still look for those directories. It exists, I do, those directories were so great. And I don't know what happened.
At one point, they became digital, there was a period of time where we got them on desk.
And it, but it, and it was a huge undertaking, the PTA did it, a big, big, big undertaking.
I do think that that's what happened, I think that the effort behind it just dwindled.
And then at the same time that all this is happening, we've also gone, and I don't know exactly how we got to the policy position that we got to, but we've also become as a society, much more for very good reasons, protective of our personal information. Um, and part of that has to do with just data security generally, and part of it has to do with FERPA. And 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 I think we're all much more aware of it. And the federal government and New York State have, have really, you know, put in place mechanisms to help districts protect students' data, but has also put in mechanisms to allow districts to share information about students and even their contact information for the purposes of directories. Recognizing that directories are things that are useful for districts to have and for families to have, and that's a good thing. When we went through our policy audit with Erie Bosse's, and I may not be remembering all the details exactly right, but we got to a point where our district, so we have a district, I'm trying, it's called Directory Information Policy.
Student Directory.
Student Directory. Policy. And we have gotten to the point, and I don't know if this happened through our audit or it just happened as we, as sort of in some ways, we became a little more, you know, conservative about how we share our data, that what we allow in our policies to share about student directory information is actually really pretty limited to students' names, I wish I had not to print out the policy.
It's attached, um, I did attach, I, I'm sorry, I didn't print it out, I attached it to the agenda. Uh, yes.
Um, but at this point, it is limited, actually, if you could bring that problem.
We made a change to it recently, if you remember, o- only because we discovered, um, there, there was a piece of information that we are sharing that we hadn't indicated in the policy. And I think it had to do with, um, the newspapers sharing our graduates every year. So that's something that is sort of a tradition, that papers tend to feature our students that are graduating. We, we updated the policy to reflect that practice.
So actually, at this point, what we have in our policy only are the kinds of things that appear in the yearbook. A student's name, their grade, whether they participate in activities and sports, right? And that has to do with the kind of things I think in the, um, in the newspapers. Honors, degrees, honors, degrees and awards, right? We report like which students make the, um, various honor rolls every term, as well as students' photographs. So at this point, our district, our student directory information policy is pretty limited. Um, and over the years, I know, I think, uh, I think the PTA, and I heard this from Megan, has asked for, we would love to be able to share more directory information. Um, and this year, we actually got a request, not just from the PTA, but also from the Haldane School Foundation. I think folks really recognizing that this is an exciting year for the district, want to be able to, you know, reach out to not just their members, but potentially to other folks. And so the request has been made for us to revise our student directory information policy. And I think one can, so you, the, so, you know, back in the day, uh, you know, that, that could entail, you know, multiple more pieces of information than we, than we currently have. So that's something for us to think about and and now have a discussion about. I don't know if we're going to decide this time, but really to come to a decision again, possibly by the next meeting, about whether this is a policy we're going to change, changing it. Um, I think the only other thing I would want to say, as I've thought about it, and I don't think anybody's going to disagree with me, it will be critically important that we give all parents multiple opportunities to opt out of a policy like. You know, to opt out of this, I mean, because that was, you could do that in the past, you could opt out of having any of it, of having anything other than your child's name in the directory. And so that's, that's just so important that we do.
I think what we, what we should be discussing or considering specifically is parent guardian address and parent guardian.
Email.
Email, yes. And I do think, um, we have talked some about how this might play out if we were to make this change this year. Um, we would need to have a policy revision, we would potentially look to have that first reading and adoption at the next meeting, just because we are, here we are already in the beginning of the school year. And I know especially the PTA is really anxious to get going, um, if we decide to make the change. I think we also had talked about potentially notifying families then in writing that, that we would be sharing this information with just our Haldane partners, that it wouldn't be shared with anyone else, but just the Haldane partners, uh, so that parents would have the opportunity, probably initially, to opt out directly to us. And then certainly, when they receive communication from the partners, they would have an opportunity to opt out from that specific partner. If you only want to hear from the school foundation and you don't want to hear from the PTA for some reason, you could make that choice as well.
And we should spell out who our partners are.
Yes, hopefully we know. And I would say our partner organizations are really the PTA, the School Foundation, the Booster Club, and the Arts Alliance.
Athletic Booster Club and Arts Board, so sport.
And Megan and I, we met with the leadership of the foundation and the PTA, and both expressed that they want to communicate more effectively, that's one of, one of their goals for the year. And Megan, just correct me if I'm wrong on this, but currently, we do send out PTA communications to all of our parents, as well as even foundation and maybe booster.
We, we do send out things on their behalf. It tends to be a flyer that gets folded in with other flyers that we send. And understandably, those things get overlooked and.
Friday, you mean the community.
Friday, yeah, which.
The PDA.
Yes, and you know, with the, the origin of that was an attempt to eliminate all those pieces of paper that were stuffed in the backpack. I don't know that those Friday blasts are particularly effective, but it.
I would.
The way they send some information out that's fairly passive.
Be nice if you didn't have to open each attachment, I don't know if that's possible, you know.
Well, you know, we actually have, so now that we have school messenger, we do have a new messaging system. So that is something we could look at.
Yeah. I'm a big supporter of it personally, having been, you know, years on the Haldane School Foundation. I mean, these are organizations, you know, speaking for all the partners, these are organizations doing the work of the school, you know, the, the affiliated organizations, and as long as they're not sharing the information beyond, you know, to any other organizations, they will much, you know, they'd be able to do the work much more effectively of reaching out to parents. It's really been, you know, trying to figure out how do you access, um, the new parent population, you know? And I would send, you know, e-blasts or, you know, people in the different organizations would send information to Ms. Jammin and say, hey, could you please get this to your kindergarten and first grade teachers and have them send it home to the parents? And it just turns into this like, you know, multi-staffed operation. And you know, and then you, you meet people on the playground that had no idea the Haldane School Foundation even existed, you know? Because, you know, the HSF is letting people know about events and things on social media. But if you don't know about them, you're not following the HSF or PTA on social media. So there's just got to be an initial, there's got to be an entry point. And I think it was, it must have been twenty nineteen or so, because I know I used to have, HSF used to have access, PTA used to have access to the directory. And then it was all of a sudden, one year I asked for it and I was told, no, the policy had changed. And, you know, with when you're not backpacking things home, and I completely agree with that policy, you know, conserving paper, but it just becomes a real challenge for all the partnering organizations to get information out to the parents to let them know of their existence, um, exciting opportunities, not just for involvement, but, you know, to come together as a community. exciting opportunities, not just for involvement, but you know, to come together as a community and support the school in all these ways that, you know, they provide, so I'm, we'll speak on behalf of supporting this.
I mean, it seems to me that so long as, as you've already referenced, there's the, there are multiple opportunities to opt out.
Right.
If you don't want to be included, I think that's important. And that there's some sort of agreement in place whereby whoever is in possession of these makes a commitment to not, you know, doesn't have a friend who's like, hey, I know you have the list, can you just give me X's email address? Because I need to ask them about the homework tonight? Because that's, because that's kind of the kind of thing that sometimes can happen. So just so long as, like, there's an understood agreement about the purpose of the contact lists, because they do, you know, it's a digital contact list, and I can imagine it finding its way.
To be clear, the PTA is looking to create a, a shared directory.
For all the parents in the district to have access, so it's not just being given to the PTA.
It isn't, yeah, it's really, it, those are really sort of two distinct purposes, so. Or these partners may use them exactly the way Michelle mentioned, but the PTA is looking to bring that student directory back to life that parents would have access to.
Well, I mean, I think those are then obviously two different paths, and so long as you're, I think, clear about what that, what that information can be, what we're comfortable with it being. And that they know they can opt out, it seems to me, right now, if you become a member of the PT, I believe it's still the case, at least it was when I was, you know, in, in the elementary school, you, you become a member of the PTA, and you can have access to those individuals who've opted in, to be, you can make that, that.
To the members.
To the members, right, and that was a kind of, you know, underhanded way to get people's information, it's like, okay, I'm going to join the PTA, so I know who's the class and how I can contact them, so. And that is less of an incentive, because there are fewer people, honestly, who are members of the PTA. So, if nothing else, this is an opportunity to build membership in the PTA, so people know what's going on and who's in charge of that, which is, I think, in the parents' best interest as well as our best interest, so.
You know, the one thing that's just occurring to me now is, like, we should just check with, with. My claim, with the.
We did.
Okay, about like what we need to.
Yep.
Like, does there need to be some sort of disclaimer on the directory? Like, whatever we need to do in terms of, like, giving people a chance to opt out, and also making really clear, like, on the directory that it's not to be, whatever you can do to.
He felt comfortable that the policy change is the vehicle to, for the district to be able to share the information and then give the opt-out opportunities.
In, yeah.
I do think that the question of, I think home address is a little bit complicated. Whereas an email is a little bit less complicated, because there are individuals who probably would like to have their home address. You know, I, I can think of instances in which you may want to keep that private for whatever reason. And, you know, obviously you can opt out of it.
I think.
There might be degrees of opting out, I'll give you my email, but not my.
Yes, I think that's a good point, and as I completely agree, and as you're saying that, I think we also need to be careful that these degrees of opting out don't become a cumbersome project for the district.
Yeah.
Because now we're. What, what?
Yeah. I wonder if we want to start with email address, right, like, just like, start with the email address this year, and then see.
It's a low barrier to entry, right?
Yes. Entry is a little less.
Yep.
You could gauge the extent to which the community is, or is, community meaning the community of parents that is or isn't happy with this change, without there being that kind of information on it.
And it is parent information, not student.
Correct, students don't read email.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, they don't, that's an old person's.
Might as well put a stamp on it, put it in the box.
Yes, I like that idea, starting with email.
With the email. It's just a different world. But I hear, but I hear people in favor of this. And so, the idea is, it's not a big policy change, I mean, it's not like the policy committee needs to be, it's that you basically put an X in the policy that checks email apparently.
Yeah, I think what, I think we would be adding a new line, because right now, the X opportunities that we have are very student-centric. So I think we would, we would just be adding one to indicate that it's parent guardian.
Yeah, and it used to be parent, I wonder if you, parent, the old directories also had parents' names.
So, but is it ju, it could just be family email address, that's all.
Because it could be, it's, then it can just be to the family.
Family name.
Family, yeah, so, that's fine, that's good, parent email address, that's good, all right.
I know in my home, if you say Mr. and Mrs. McNaul, it's okay, just don't say Mr. Sean McNaul and wife or something.
Plus one. Uh, okay, so I will put this on for our next meeting for our first reading and adoption with the revision. Great, thank you, thanks, everybody.
So, um, but we're now to the second opportunity for communication from the public, this time for all district matters.
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you.
You waited so long.
Perfect opportunity, because I do security and privacy for a while. So, a couple of things, one is that I think that looking at an alternative cost-effective type of solution for voting, awesome. I don't know anything about this company, but, and I think a lot of people hit on some of the potential public concerns that when I, my thing in there, I know my votes counted. So I think it's essential that you be, be, that you are able to answer the public's questions regarding what is a process to ensure the integrity of it, you know, i.e. iPad reconciled with the.
The count.
Count and so forth. And then, the other thing is understanding what the test and validation process is for the actual scanner itself. So in other words, you want to make sure that the end-to-end process works, that it's not mechanical or electronic error. So that's that. So regarding the, I agree 100%, I still have.
Second fine one.
Yeah, my kids, my last kid's been out of here now for four years, but I still have it. So, but that's the problem with data, is that once you release it, it's out of your control. Now typically, in a corporate world, when you're transferring data, you actually have some sort of data transfer agreement with the other organizations that stipulates how they're supposed to take care of it. Also, it covers what is the opt-out process and the revocation of those records. So you need to make sure that you have that, this policy, doesn't need to be fancy, but it's something to think about. What is that process when somebody says, yeah, I, you know, I've been getting a lot of spam, so I need to kind of get out of this? How do you ensure that the record's been deleted? Generally, on these things, and I kind of go head-to-head on the attorneys with this, opt-in is a lot safer than opt-out. Opt-out makes people angry, because they didn't get the memo, they didn't read the memo. We saw that with the Clear Choice Energy type of things, right? Like, who, who, you know, I missed the email, right? You know, and all of a sudden, they switch my energy provider. So, something to think about, it will lower your participation rate. And I do think it's very smart to start with email first, because then they can get the contact information if they need the person's address, they can get it. But it is a different world that we live in. And these email address lists are used for a lot of bad things, whether it's, you know, it used to be just spam, marketing, things like that, somebody would sell the list, and you could, these places, you go to sell these lists. But then it's also used for phishing attacks, where somebody kind of gets a list, and they pretend to be somebody related to the district, or, you know, they think they're in a different community. So just something to think about, there's no good answer other than not using it, which is not a good answer, because it does serve a valuable purpose, right? I mean, we all use credit cards, and we know that there are potential risks, but we weigh the benefits. But my biggest thing is, you know, try to seek consent, great opportunity to do that as a beginning of school year with security policy and everything else, that you consent to that, just like you would have a medical consent for hip and share information. That's all. And then the data transfer agreement, doesn't have to be official like that, but you can Google data transfer agreements where I can.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I think this, as you're saying, that I'm thinking this could be one of those, you know, some of our policies, we end up writing sort of procedures that go with them, that aren't really in the policy, but it's sort of how we operate to maintain that policy. So this might be a case where we want to just have a procedure that could even be a document we share with the partners that just reiterates how the information can and can't be used. And I agree, in future school years, we should absolutely fold that consent into our back-to-school electronic forms that go out, unfortunately, we've missed that wave for this year, but that's the perfect place for it.
And then the last part of that is life cycle management of that, so, in other words, okay, I'm no longer in the district.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, how, how does that happen? As I get deleted, it happens. But I do think, I still have my list, I think it's very valuable. And I think it actually goes beyond those organizations, you know. I wish the town would have something like this.
I mean, I think Damian raises a really important question, since we didn't have the chance to send it out at the beginning, we may want to think about an opt-in process, and I know it will really limit. I, I don't, I, I think, I think that's something we should, I think that's, I'm going to put out there that I think it's something we do. Like, think about, you could. Yeah, an opt-in process, although it would really reduce. If, if we're implementing something like this, and it's a change, and this is an important year for the district, where we want people to be feeling very good about everything that the district is doing, I think we want to really respect people who have real privacy concerns, I think we want to be respectful of that. But that's just my, I'm one of the four to five, thinking about an opt-in instead of an opt-out.
I have a thought. I know, for example, in my home district, this is in place because I never opted in, I get PTA notifications, I get town notifications, updates, emergencies, whatever it may be. I, I believe more and more districts, my last couple of districts I've been in, we did share, we had a policy that enabled us to share emails with our, our partners. Would it help if I polled Putnam Northern Westchester Superintendent Group to find out how many districts do provide email contacts to PTA and foundation? So you at least have an idea of what other districts are doing out there. I suspect it's, it's becoming commonplace. Getting people to opt in is, is a real, and that's what, that's what we heard from both organizations, that it's a real challenge. And membership is down in PTA, it's a struggle for them.
I mean, maybe instead of, I know that the PTA wants to do a directory, but maybe, like, a first step would be an opting out to create a directory like this that our partner organizations could use this year under very explicit circumstances, and then with the idea that a, a directory that's shared widely would be, I don't know.
A part two.
I think, yeah, or we need to hear, but, but I think the first step, I think McCruff is exactly right, is hearing what other districts are, are saying. I know. Let's not talk about, all right. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Do board members have any reflection? Thanks to everybody for everything they've done for the start of the school year, it's really a big, big day.
That would be, if they weren't, if you weren't long in the. Congratulations and thank you, and can't wait to see you again.
Um, I move to a during the meeting, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?